Ladies and gentlemen, good morning and welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting of nine in July. One good news item before we begin, as you know, we've mentioned that we had applied for a grant with respect to Center School and we received word from the state the past few days that we've received the grant. It's for a reuse study for the Center School facility along with a facility assessment. Some of the deliverables include a marketing strategy for that, what reuse options might be, and what facility improvements would be required in order to support the reuse. And the project will be managed on our behalf by the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. We'll talk a little bit more about that later and how we engage. Today, we've got a number of topics to cover that many are a follow-on from our previous meeting, talking about some of our projects, town hall garage, town hall renovation, the highway garage roof, the water transmission line, the potential grant for window and roof replacement at Smith Academy, some committee issues, also some areas of fiscal year 14 focus for the Board of Selectmen. We also have with us today Mr. Mark Gelot today in his other hat representing open space and Peter Cox as well representing open space. Before we begin, are there any announcements?
I just have one thing, the passing of Linda Volinger. Both Linda and Donald were very involved in the community. Linda, I believe, was a teacher's aide down at the school. Donald worked for many years on the fire department. That's where I got to know Donald. They were both pretty close friends to me, so I'd just like to have a moment of silence for Linda. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone here for community forum? We had one set of minutes.
I move that we accept the minutes of June 25, 2013.
Is there a second?
I will second it, but I wasn't here for the first portion up to the Energy Committee, so from there beyond, I'll second.
I do have, I do have one edit. This is on second page, town meeting follow-up actions. And the first entry there lists several town meeting follow-up actions and it goes on, talks about the marijuana dispensary article. And it should read on one, two, three, end of line four, "This group is to be composed of members of the, a member of the Board of Health, a member of the Planning Board, a representative of the Police Department, a zoning enforcement officer, a member of the Board of Selectmen, and a medical professional jointly selected by the Board of Selectmen and Board of Health." Then a period, and then PBPC's Larry Smith is also heading up a similar group, but just with that one edit, getting the composition right. Subject to that, any other comments?
Subject to the one correction.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We'll begin with Mark, or Peter.
This is Ben Wright.
Hi, Ben.
From Kestrel Land Trust. I'm here with, on behalf of the Open Space Committee, with Ben Wright, who is a, what's your title at the?
My land conservation specialist with Kestrel Land Trust.
Kestrel Land Trust. And the reason we're coming to the board today is to ask for support for a grant application that Kestrel is actually submitting, and it would be proposed and interrupt when you need to, Ben, as I'm going to try to explain it. The grant application would be a partnership grant with Kestrel Land Trust and the DPW, the Hatfield DPW. And I've got these, if you want to just pass them out. It is for the purchase of a piece of property which is directly in the watershed for a reservoir. It's a piece of--
Which zone?
It's, which zone?
It's actually a Zone C. So, if I can, I'll just jump in for one second. We had initially looked at a drinking water protection grant through the state, but because it's a Zone C, it wouldn't score well.
Okay.
Wouldn't compete well. So, we've tried to change approach and go for a different pot of money through the state, which is the conservation partnership grant that Mark just mentioned.
Okay.
With a larger property, a more expensive property, you might want to go for a land grant. It's a third grant, I don't want to throw too many different grants at you here, but because it's a smaller parcel, because it's a lower amount of money, and the qualities, the conservation values of the property, it would probably score better and compete better as a conservation partnership grant.
Thank you.
So, the parcel is shown in black at the top there. I didn't put the name of the landowner on there because we're still in negotiations with that person. But I think the grant, how much would the grant pay for?
Conservation partnership grant covers 50%, and that's the purchase price and some of the due diligence costs.
Right. So, the purchase price at this point is looking like somewhere between $30,000 and $40,000 for this parcel. And so, the grant, if it were successful, would cover half of that amount.
And then the town would have to flip the other half?
And then we would apply for CPA to cover the remaining portion. So, this would be an ongoing process where we would apply in December, by December, to the CPA, presuming that the grant would come back by that time. I think it would. The grants would probably come back in September?
Yeah, sometimes, sometimes November, we've even had it delayed until December.
Okay. But hopefully, at that point, when we apply for CPA, we'll know whether or not the grant was successful. And then we'll go from there, and if everything follows through, we would close that town meeting out of vote for the CPA. So, that's the tentative timeline. And we're coming to the board to ask for your support for this. The grant application would require a letter of support, so we could draft that and, provided that you approve of that, we could draft that and have the board sign it.
When's the application due?
Let's do the 22nd of July.
Okay.
I'd like to move that we support and sign the letter when, since Mark gets it, while reading it, and support this project. What it does is it puts closure on that one piece also. The town owns everything around it on that side of the road, so I think it would be a wise decision to take and purchase that and make it part of the town's property.
Is there a second on the portion of support? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Please do draft a letter, but just before we move off the subject, is there a master plan of prioritization of parcels here that we would like to acquire?
We do have a master plan, and--
And how does this fit?
Well, you can see the line, you can see on this map, the line which shows the watershed boundary.
Yes.
So, that is our number one, that's the area of concern. And then it is graded, the proximity to the reservoir would be, as you said, the zone, what is it, A?
Zone A and then B.
Zone A, B, and C, so the farther away you get.
Right.
So, those are our kind of priority pieces. And without naming names of landowners, that's kind of the way we're going about this process. Sometimes things come up--
Out of, whether it comes up in C and not A, I understand.
Depending upon who's interested and who's not interested. But suffice it to say that there, we do have other interested, we do have other pieces that would fit well with the puzzle, say to connect the upper part to the lower part and other connections.
Yeah.
So, we will be pursuing those.
You also have to remember where the little brooks come into that reservoir also and try to focus on those areas to secure at some point in time.
Exactly, yeah, the headwaters are very important.
Yeah, okay, that's very important, because if you put in a house with septic system and contaminate our feeders, then that's a whole nother problem that we have.
Right.
Certainly, if land comes up available, then we should be, if we're in a position to, we should be looking at that.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Mark, I have a question, not so much for this, but I had a guy from this logging company approach me here a month ago, and question kind of came up about hiking trails.
Yeah.
And this guy is under the impression that wherever there's a hiking trail, that we cannot do any, or the loggers are basically told, like, can I log on that, those parcels? I was wondering if there's any truth to that, or?
Not that I know of. Ben, do you?
No, I mean, that could be the landowner's decision.
Yeah.
But typically, we, if there's the logging operation on a property and there's a hiking trail, it's just written into it, if there's a conservation restriction, for example, that it'll be posted that the trails are closed while the logging's going on.
Right.
So, usually, it's the other way around, that the hiking's restricted by the logging operation.
Right.
I will say that these areas in the Hatfield watershed do have a conservation restriction on most of them, held by the Department of Conservation Recreation. So, there are specific rules that if logging takes place, those rules should apply in terms of proper forestry and things like that.
Right.
So, but yeah, hiking's allowed, snowmobiling's allowed, hunting is allowed by permission. So, there are many things that are allowed under the conservation restriction. Logging would be managed properly by the DPW, so.
Yeah, is that kind of, we do logging there probably every, I don't know, 10, 20 years, just selective cutting, you know?
Right.
And we do, I do believe we do work with a state forester to come in and show us what's going to come out, but--
Right.
I mean, this thing just kind of cropped up, and I was just kind of concerned a little bit about it.
Right.
We do have the trails through there, so.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you, Ben.
One more question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The three parcels that are above the reservoir here, I believe that was put into land trust. Do you know for sure that it's been put into land trust?
Part of the tree farm, yeah.
Where the tree farm is, so nobody can build, that's not a buildable.
That is an agricultural use, so it is restricted to an agricultural use, but it is, it is owned by a private landowner.
Okay, but my, I guess my question is, can it ever be reconverted back to residential?
No.
Okay. And then these two parcels, are they included?
Yes, they are.
So, that's part of that.
There's even a good section in Whately that's also included in that.
This is where we're talking, in here.
So, are those parcels in APR or something else?
Forest Legacy.
Forest Legacy, okay.
Okay.
Which is a--
So, that protects us big time, so we don't have to worry about any houses up there.
Right, right, yeah.
Because that would put a big damper on--
Yeah, that is right at the headwater of the--
Yeah, right, exactly.
The running gutter there, so.
If I can just throw in one more detail here on this particular grant application, normally, Kestrel would be serving as a conservation restriction holder as a partner on these deals, but this particular grant application requires it to be the other way around. So, the town would hold a conservation restriction on the property and hold the development rights, and Kestrel would be the fee owner.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
One other question.
You're not going to get away.
Target of opportunity.
Well, it is. We had another landowner in town, and you were involved with that. I was just wondering how that's making out on that piece of property between the railroad tracks and 91, that border there?
The issue with that is access. And we haven't come up with a direct access to that property yet, so we're kind of stuck. Although, there is a possibility of either a land trust or another entity looking at conserving that property.
Okay.
So, but I think the board's concern was emergency access. I mean, it's always been my opinion that, you know, emergency access could be had on an emergency basis--
It has to go.
But it's up to the board to decide to accept that donation. I think that donation is still there, but the emergency access is not clearly specified at this point. I think that's the issue.
Right.
Thanks again.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Massachusetts School Building Authority Accelerator Repair Program, this is the potential grant from the state to repair the roof and windows at Smith Academy. Had exchange with the chair of the school committee. They have, they meet tomorrow to take up the issue of whether or not the school committee itself will take care of the design. That's an answer that is required by the 5th of August by the state, and there's a whole series of other actions that trail from that, but did you have some particular item on this that you wanted to talk to?
No, no, I've got it on the agenda just because it's probably going to be a discussion point from here on in, but I don't have any new information on it.
But meanwhile, Paul is our point of contact on this, and you can be working out with John Robert all the little footnotes to the--
Right.
--certification, so we can go with that. Okay. Energy Committee. Last time, we talked about Energy Committee, and I think the time before that.
I saw, I saw Mike upstairs, so I was just wondering if he was coming down or what's going on with that?
No, no.
What's going on with the Energy Committee?
Well, last, at the last meeting, we decided, we kind of divvied this up, and I've confirmed with the school committee that Mr. Pachek continues to represent them. I've confirmed with Mr. Williams that he still plans to stay on the committee, confirmed with Mr. Miltika, he plans to continue with the committee. And the town administrator contacted or was attempting to contact Mr. Smith and Mr. Biddle to see what their druthers were, but we do have a quorum at least with three continuing participants.
I sent the other two members an email, you know, asking what their interest was in remaining and kind of briefly outlining, you know, what we need to do, but I got, I as of yet, received no response.
Well, now, I checked with Kay, who tells me that the other two gentlemen were not up for reappointment. Their appointment was a multi-year period, and their term of office was not up yet.
The last, last meeting, I have a little vocal on this, and I still feel the same way, gave them a chance to come and present what we, we need help, okay? Mr. Barry came, and he said that we have grant applications out there that we have, have to get done, we have all kinds of work to do, and nobody's coming forward to even discuss that. So, I think, I'm going back to my main thing, what I said last meeting, is that if we can't get the cooperation and nobody's showing up, then I think what we have to do is change the charter. Therefore, I would make a motion that we disband the present committee, create a new charter on how we want them to move forward, and then we can reappoint. That would be my motion, to disband the existing committee at this point.
What would you propose to be the content of the new charter, I guess? What, what functions would you add, or what, what things are you talking about taking away?
There's a lot of, there's a, right now, with the Energy Committee, the way they're going about, they're going about the whole town, looking at energy in solar fashion and this fashion, that fashion, when originally, we hired them to look at the town hall, get these items done, get the grant applications out, and move on, on certain things that we need to have done right now. And, you know, they submitted their information, but then everything just kind of like fell apart. So, in order to move forward, I mean, there's what, another million dollars or $100,000 out there that the town could be applying for, and--
Actually--
We're not coming forward here and getting it done.
Yeah, though the--
So, to me, I would like to see that charter redesigned to focus on going after these type of programs that are out there and supporting those, and then if they wanted to go outside the box, we'd come in and discuss it with the Board of Selectmen, and then we'd, we could discuss, well, maybe we should focus on this, or this, or this. But right now, it leaves it open.
Yeah. I just wanted to say that I did receive a call from the chairman of the Energy Committee, who said that he was going to schedule a meeting this week.
It was not posted as of yesterday.
As of yet, not that I'm aware of. But to follow up with Ed's comments, what I would like to see is the focus of the Energy Committee, you know, more concentrated on the whole green communities program. It's kind of, you know, whatever, you know, it's pretty broad now in terms of, you know, what their responsibilities are, right? It needs to be really focused on keeping the town eligible for applying, you know, for applying for green communities funds. And that's, that's rather involved.
Jim Barry was very concerned that we were not going to be able to move forward on this because we didn't have the--
Yeah, my, you know, basically, it's all fallen on my shoulders at this point, and Jim, you know, in my discussions with Mr. Barry, he says, you know, well, that's not the way it should be working.
But my, Mr. Chair, my suggestion would be to keep the three members on the board that have agreed to stay on the board. I don't, I don't believe we should disband because I think, number one, you're telling the other three members that seem to be interested, that's it, we're going to start a whole new program. I feel that we should tell Paul to get ahold of the chairman and have them have a meeting as soon as possible, number one.
But that's what we said two weeks ago.
Well, I mean, we do have, the last meeting, we didn't know who was interested, now we know who's interested. And I think the three members that remain on the, on the board are really interested in moving forward, so I guess my, my suggestion is to have Paul just put a little, put a little more push to the three members, and if we have to find two or more members, we will advertise for two more members coming on board.
See, once you appoint somebody, they're there until you remove them or their term is up, okay? So, in order to, there's two ways, I guess, you could do that. You could disband the whole committee or go in and, and just reconsider our vote on appointment to the other two members, and their appointments have been forfeited, and we move forward on appointing two other people. I mean, that's another way to approach it.
Well, I, okay, we can, we can look at that, but my feeling is if we got the three members right now that are willing to remain on the board, I don't see a need of saying to them, no, we're disbanding this committee, and I think you, I think you'd just kind of upset the apple cart if you--
Okay, let me withdraw my motion and create another motion that I, I would like the board to reconsider the appointment of the other two gentlemen that are not interested and remove them from the committee. That'll be my vote, or my motion.
Okay, I can second that.
All right.
Open for discussion, further discussion.
Do we want to, I mean, Paul, we, Paul has called, we've asked the chairman to poll, got no response. This is, this is not just two weeks, this has been since 30 May.
Right.
It's now, according to my watch, nine in July.
It's not like we haven't asked for help and asked them to cooperate and to come in and participate, and they're not doing it. I mean, they're not here today even, and we specifically asked them to be here today. Very important, in order for us to move forward on--
Well, I'm, now, did we actually tell them to be here today? I mean, did anybody actually notify them, either, any of those three that are interested to be here today?
No.
I guess that's--
No, no, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't.
That's the first thing, nobody actually notified. So, how can you expect somebody to be here--
I thought we did--
--if they actually weren't notified, other than if they saw it on camera, which chances are, they may have not? So, I guess that's where I stand on that.
I thought Paul was going to be notified, that he would--
The only thing, do we owe them one last shot, saying, give us an answer, or your term is vacated on the Energy Committee?
I mean, we got the three right now.
Yeah.
If they're interested--
And they could, they could press on.
They can press on, okay?
But this is critical, we get moving forward.
Right.
And I agree with what you're saying.
The three that we have right now, if they're at a meeting, they can make decisions, without a doubt.
Right.
Okay? But my suggestion is to have Paul contact the three of them and tell them that they have to move and move swiftly, and we would like to see all three of them, if, if not at least one of them, at next meeting to give us an update as to where they are.
I would like a letter sent to each one of them requesting their presence be at our next meeting.
Right. I mean, but if one of, one of them can't be here for whatever reason, I mean, I'm not going to demand that they're here if they've got to work or whatever they have to do, but at least one of them should show and give us an update as to how they're moving on. That's my suggestion.
At our last meeting, requested them to be here, okay?
But we didn't request them. I didn't request them, did you request them?
No.
Nobody requested them. How, how can you expect somebody to be here unless they just feel it coming to be here? So, I mean, that's, that's--
All right. How about, how about this? One, let's leave the charter in place for the moment. Two, we'll have Paul engage with the three who choose to remain active. I would propose that there be a meeting with Paul attending, and ideally, if we could get Jim Barry there with them, and to talk about what, you know, the immediate priorities are and what we're looking for is a replan, rebase line, because we started in 2008, it's a five-year plan, we need to change to a new baseline here. I guess we're deferring, we were late on one report, we're deferring that report until November--
Mm-hmm.
--an annual report, and just to help them get started and focus on the immediate actions. And then, the other, the other piece to that is if the remaining two, having been told that either, unless we hear from you by some state certain, we're simply going to vacate your appointment, deal it that way.
Okay.
We have to move forward on this.
I know, we're, we're--
Yeah, we're trying.
We wasted--
And I agree with what you're saying, they should have been notified to be here today, okay?
All right. All right, but anyway, get started with the three, Jim and yourself, and get the replan underway.
Okay. Yeah, Jim has offered to help in any way he can.
And the other thing, I would, I would propose to the board that we go with Guardian, was that the outfit, that offer to come in at no cost to help with development or replan?
Do some energy audits.
And do an energy audit, it's no cost to us, I mean--
Yeah, I mean, that would, that would--
That would help them get some data.
It would be a big step in the right direction of, you know, putting a new five-year plan together.
So, I'd add that to the mix as well.
Okay, I'd move that.
All right, so moved, is there a second?
Hang on one second, there's already one, one motion made, so somebody's got--
Okay, we just don't, we just, when you vote on it, just don't vote on it, the motion dies. So, called, all those in favor?
There's a motion on the table now.
No.
Yeah, but we didn't, we're not--
He made a motion.
We're not saying anything. I made the motion, he seconded it.
Right.
Oh, I moved the table.
Okay.
Well-- Well...
Well, if nobody, if we don't vote on it, then it dies anyway.
All right.
So...
Okay, so now he made a motion that we contact...
Guardian.
Guardian to come in and give us an audit on basically our five-year program.
Help us with an energy audit.
Or help us with an energy audit.
Move forward with Guardian coming in and doing that. I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, you have a way ahead.
I want to be very clear now, this week, that next meeting, we're going to have, Paul, you're going to be contacting them and getting them in here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep. I will.
Jim, I have to say this, Mr. Barry has been very, very helpful. He's with the state, and he's been trying to represent us well in some difficult circumstances here, so... But this is important because there's potential grant money out there for us.
Well, there's $100,000 sitting there that we can't do anything with until we finish our projects, come back with the cost, the analysis of the projects that we did. And I know, I got the information from Tony, and we saved, what, $4,000 last year just on the heating. And that's a big savings on what we did up there.
So the work is not only important in terms of reducing our operational costs, which is real money, and it opens the door, in completing the actions that Mr. Barry's talking about, about the replan and submitting the report timely, also opens us opportunities for additional grants to do even more work.
And just for clarification, the upper limit on those grants is $250,000.
So, okay, great. Recreation, let's, can we close this one?
We can't close it yet because I don't think there's been a...
Is there a resignation letter?
Last I knew, there had not been a resignation letter yet from Ms. Edwards.
Okay, pending submission receipt of the resignation letter, can we appoint Mr. Niles?
I think you need to appoint him, yes.
Okay, but don't we have to run this through Town Clerk?
We have to run that through Town Clerk, and she's got to bring us the information. I don't, I don't want to jump the gun on this one, I know.
Yeah.
That's right.
Okay, I brought that up the last time, and let's just wait.
Okay.
So we'll bring it up at the next meeting. If, for some reason, she doesn't come in, because she did say she was going to be submitting her letter, if she doesn't, then what we can do is we can draw...
Consider it vacated and...
Right, we can vacate the thing.
But we also should get some, a form from Town Clerk, as we, I mean, as we normally do.
Let's do an easy one first, and then come back to the HR, okay? The Marijuana Treatment Center and Dispensary Agent Study Group, is there a motion to appoint Mr. Lesko as the Board of Selectment representative, and Mr. Sodasky as the zoning enforcement officer representative on this study group?
I think you can go ahead and appoint...
So moved, okay.
I'm okay with that.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I talked to the police chief, and he's also willing to serve.
Okay. Motion to approve the Chief of Police as the Police Department Representative on this study group?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, we still have, hear from the Board of Health?
Board of Health, we're having a meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
And also Planning Board, we got to get somebody from the Planning Board.
And then, the other is that health professional.
There's, there's a doctor, there's a couple of doctors in town that we have, I'd like to see if they might want to be interested in that.
Okay.
Get in touch with them and see if they're interested in serving on this kind of a committee.
The other thing is, I mentioned earlier, Larry Smith, PVPC, is heading up a group to do a model. Remember that night at your Hampshire County Selectment Association meeting?
So he's going to have a lot of information that they're going to be working on.
So might want to, whoever, this group might want to piggyback his work.
I believe they're getting a lot of their data from the state, the information that I gave you, a copy of, he's probably getting the same stuff because they have the same person doing the presentation.
Plagiarism doesn't count anymore. They've got good ideas, rules and regulations, let's just...
The ultimate goal here is to get a location in town, to locate where you could have a center if it actually came, or a store if it actually came to that. So the Planning Board can have an area designated in town, whether it be an industrial park area, you certainly wouldn't want to have it downtown because it'd get a lot of problems then. But that's what the committee's going to be looking at.
Well, that's one thing. All rules, regulations, everything that applies to their operation. So many of the things that apply to cigarette sales would probably apply to...
Pretty much, pretty much the same, it's going to apply to everybody. That's why we have who we have on there, because some of the stuff is very unclear. I know when I sat into a four-hour meeting on this stuff here, they, whether the Drug Administration officials were in charge, they said no, whether it's the local police department, they didn't know. So there's some things that nobody really knows what's going on there as far as enforcement. As far as the Board of Health side, we're there to make sure that it just saves for the, for the people to, you know, how their, any chemicals being used, that kind of stuff, how it's going to affect the people, that's what our interests are.
Okay. One other quick thing, did you ever, on the scheduling, did we ever close with Town Clerk? Whether a one-July appointment schedule would be okay?
No, it's not going to be okay.
Okay.
I talked with them. There's, there's reasons why they can't do it on July 1st, okay?
Or 30 June, rather, whatever.
Yeah, I mean, there's some that can, but some that can't. But we're trying to get a date set where we could probably do them all at the same time. So Lydia would like to come in, she's working on it right now. She'd like to come in and discuss it with all of us at some point in the near future on reappointments. So I'd like to give her that chance to finish up her stuff and then, and come in and do a presentation to us.
Yeah, she's, she's had some other things to deal with, but I know right now, she's kind of concentrating on the whole appointment process and trying to get it all clear in her own mind, you know, how this is, how it's currently working, and perhaps how it could work better, so...
The only loose end by the schedule we have now is those positions which are by function, for example, there's a finance committee rep on XYZ Committee, or a school committee rep on, those elections occur, and the individual might change after middle of May. But otherwise... All right. One of the things we talked about is establishing a Human Resource Advisory Committee, and Paul had drafted a charter, anybody have it? Look at that, I've got, I've got several.
I did read down through that whole thing.
Let me, I'll give you mine, and then you can shoot at it. I'd add a, one new tick right at the beginning. The Hatfield Human Resource Advisory Committee shall provide recommendations to the Board of Selectmen on the town's human resource policy, to include but not limited to scope, processes, and currency. Second bullet, shall develop an employee compensation and classification annex to the town's human resource policy. The next bullet, shall advise the board regarding issues or questions that may arise regarding the town human resource policies. And I struck out there the employee compensation classification plan, because that's an annex to it, so you're just saying it there is redundant. I delete the next one entirely, shall advise the board regarding keeping the plan up to date, we already covered that, we talked about the responsibility to maintain currency. The next one, changed to read, shall review and coordinate on position descriptions. They don't write position descriptions, that's the responsibility of line management, the supervisor, supervisors define their jobs. But they may have suggestions. The next one, I delete that about the COLA, that's a financial decision, it's not a staff, it's not a HR function. The next one, shall hear employee complaints as referred, and submit recommended resolutions to the Board of Selectmen. I don't want to give the impression that they're going to hear all employee complaints. One, that's again, line management responsibility, a supervisor responsibility to hear their and address their employee complaints. But there may be some that the Board of Selectmen may choose to refer to them for, to get advice and recommendations.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think that would be...
Also, the union contract covers some, or DPW folks, exactly how they're to be treated. Shall provide, the next one, provide guidance to screening and selection committees. They don't need to participate in all of them. Again, back to why you have these kinds of committees, they're focused on policies, they're focused on process, providing advice to management. And then maintain the records, that's fine. I'd also consider, I think we ought to consider, do we want them perhaps to incorporate in the HR policy as part of their substantive review, creation of an awards program? Put in some guidance there about our performance evaluation system.
I think there also should be something in here regarding elected officials' salaries. I don't see that here. Maybe I misread something.
In the, oh, I see, in the compensation and classification.
We've already started with the Town Clerk and Treasurer positions, I mean, adding more money to their accounts and, and all that, and I don't think it's fair that you just look at one or two, I think you need to look at the whole bunch and come up with some kind of a program.
Don't forget Board of Health.
Board of Health, yeah.
Yeah.
You don't...
No, I, no, I, no.
I know where that was coming.
No, that's a, that's a good, that's a good, that's a good...
I couldn't refuse that, I couldn't, just couldn't.
So I guess somewhere in here, we define the compensation and classification to include both town staff, appointed, and, as well as elected. Well, another function that we might have is, I know some communities do this, use the group to vet committee appointments, you know, people requesting appointment to various committees. Our problem is, there aren't that many folks volunteering in the first place, so... But having guidance about an awards program, having guidance about the performance evaluation system in our HR policy.
Well, those would be specific projects within the committee, okay? Yeah, that wouldn't, you know, that would be maybe a line in here as maybe a bullet that states that they look at specific projects that they might want to institute.
Those are my thoughts on the thing.
So, why don't we get a clean, clean copy? I, you know, you got pretty much, you hit just about everything, and a couple more items, I don't know if you made notes, Paul, or anything, about getting elected officials in there, and, and then the, some kind of a bullet in here that they look at other incentives or something like that, that might, that they might want to institute into the program.
All right, so we'll take another, one more cut at this.
Yeah.
Do you want this, or did you? Give to the expert. Thank you. I'll translate this. I've got the Rosetta Stone over here. HRA, there was a failure to elect due to a tie vote in a recent election, a member of the Hatfield Redevelopment Authority for a five-year term. There were two individuals who got two votes each. One of the individuals has declined, stated they were really not interested in being considered for appointment. The other individual responded, and you have a copy of an email I shared with you, stating he'd only be interested in considering it if the board would commit to a certain action. Of course, we're not the only ones appointing to this committee, this would be a joint appointment between us and the HRA. I guess...
I mean, my feelings towards it is that Route 5 is going to be commercial down the road someday. I think there should be, well, right now, there are certain parts that are industrial and commercial and that kind of stuff. And I feel that if somebody wants to put their property in commercial, they should be able to. And then the Planning Board goes into action and does their hearings, and it moves it forward to town meeting. So I don't have a problem with doing it that way either.
Well, that's, that's really not what he was saying, however.
Well, we can't, I read the, read his letter, and we can't force, and he's not asking to force the people to put their property there, but he's also saying that if we're in support of it, then we can let the people know that anybody that's interested, that wants to put their land in there, can, and that we'll support it and move forward on it. That's what we're willing to do, or I'm willing to do.
Yeah, I mean, the, well, as we all know, the last time, it got pretty well shut down, and I know I heard several complaints about, you know, there's people with small parcels that lived there all their lives, and where there are bigger parcels that people, other landowners, you know, I agree with Ed, you know, may want us to put it into a business or industrial, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't have a problem with that, you know? I just...
Somebody have that letter that, you have a copy of the email, I didn't get a copy?
I did. When I attended...
Here's, the only way I would consider appointment is if the BOOS would initiate and support the process, initiate and support the process of rezoning all or portions of Route 5 and 10 north of Lindsay Road. So...
The people that came and were against it, a lot of them just wanted more say, wanted it to go to a public hearing and stuff like that. To me, I would have never had the third meeting, and I told the board that, because I couldn't make it that night anyway, but until later. But it should have gone to the Planning Board. After the second meeting, it should have gone right into the Planning Board and let them start holding the hearings on it. And then it becomes a whole nother document, and the whole procedure starts. Then it goes to town meeting. That's where it should, that's the way it should have gone, okay? But it didn't, anyway. So, and I guess that's what, that's what we're asking here, but if we're not careful, I mean, you can design it the way you want Route 5 now, but down the road, you may not, you know, if somebody starts coming in and just rezoning this parcel and that parcel, and not putting it all together, then you can get into trouble.
How about, two things. One, as a backup, if anyone else is interested, just making an announcement, that's potentially another slot on the Hatfield Redevelopment Authority, a five-year term, to let us know about their interest. But second, refer the gentleman's comments to the HRA. But second, refer the gentleman's comments to the HRA, and let them think about it as well, since other members may have a different view than that, and they're gonna vote on this. If they're all opposed, it's a non-starter already. But if they're willing to entertain that, then we could have our joint meeting and address it. Is that reasonable?
Sure. Paul, you get in touch with them?
Paul, you have that email?
Yes, I do, yes.
Just share that with them and let their thoughts over.
Okay. I moved to abate $3,091.84, ambulance abatement.
Is there a second?
Second.
I don't know how you got to that, but.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't. I was just looking at the page here.
What are we doing on the?
I'm sorry, Joe.
Oh, okay.
Might as well continue the baitment.
Okay, yeah, we got a baitment.
Eight seconds.
Did we all vote on the baitment?
Yeah.
Any other discussion, all in favor? All right. Paul, did you have performance reviews, direct reports, anything on that?
No, no. I just, kind of a placeholder unless there was anything anyone wanted to discuss on that.
I've got, I've requested input from the folks that I'm writing on. Supposed to have it on Thursday. All right, we're still, we're still, that's in work. Town meeting follow-up. You've got that out here.
Nothing specific.
Tell me, I noticed we had in here the revision to the senior work-off program.
Right.
To accommodate stand-ins per town meeting section.
Right, yeah.
We need the veterans.
Right.
It almost.
Yeah, they'll, well, there'll need to be a separate form for that.
Yeah. Okay.
Same. It'll look similar.
Pretty similar.
You know, the eligibility criteria is different, so.
Okay, but then.
We have put that information on the website, and there's forms here in town hall, so.
Okay, I did look at, I guess you submitted this, Paul?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. You got currently down here the tax collector's office, the town clerk's office, and I talked with the tax collector this morning, and she said most of her work is when she's at some kind of a critical stage, that she needs to get envelopes out, I mean, bills out and stuff like that, where she always gets the three or four people together and just come down and do it, and volunteer their service. What she said is that, you know, her suggestion would be that use that in a more crucial way, like if there was a specific project that needed to get out and done, that's where you would use this kind of a help. But just in a normal stuff where people volunteer just to get the envelopes out, anybody can get the envelopes out. And so, I think you have to have, you know, some kind of a.
Well, the Board of Selectmen approve each one, if you read the whole thing, Board of Selectmen approve any participation. So, this is out there, and presumably it's announced, tells people how to apply. The various departments are supposed to, they identify the requirements.
Right.
So, if, if the tax collector doesn't need someone to stuff envelopes through this program, they ought not identify that as a requirement. They only identify requirements for what they want.
Right, but when you put down here, currently there are positions available, okay?
Oh, I see.
In these offices, okay? So then, when I.
I see.
Because I didn't know what position, what we're talking about here. So, when I went to find out, then I guess we want to be careful on what we're looking for to put somebody in.
Okay.
If we're getting somebody to just stuff envelopes, and they're coming in and donating their time, that you got four people that do it in four hours or whatever, and the job is done, then to me, that, you know, they're doing a service to the town, and they're not looking for compensation, they're just looking to do something. Okay, so if you look at a specific project, then that's a whole different story. So, then I could see listing the projects that we have, or the things that they have, but just, just putting out currently there are positions available, you know, that's why I'm questioning, what are the positions available?
Okay, yours. All right, so you're suggesting we delete this from?
Yeah, and put a.
And separately post, after making a troll of the various departments of what they're looking for or have a need for, for that kind of support.
Yes, yes. Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Like a separate job announcement kind of thing. Handle it like, yeah, just like a regular job.
Yeah, exactly. So, once it's posted, it's bulletized, you know, you put it in a bullet, this, 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 and this, then we can approve it ahead of time.
Senior work-off program opportunities, veteran work-off program opportunities, something like that, and then whatever they are.
But see, just, this is a general statement, and that, I'm not looking for a general, I think it has to be more specific.
Okay, so we should drop it from, drop that paragraph?
Drop that, and put in the specific jobs include, okay? You know.
Or they're, or you'll, or they're posted on Channel 15 and/or our webpage.
Yeah, what's available out there, and, you know, and once we approve it, it can go up there on the board.
Okay.
You know, but it's gotta be approved by us.
Right.
Okay, you just can't, I wouldn't approve just currently there are positions available. And that's why I said, what are the positions available?
Well, you know, if, if someone, you know, wanted to do some work for the tax collector's office, you know, the way I saw this working out, the way I've seen it worked out in the past, you know, they would coordinate with whoever the department had is on, you know, what's to be done, what are the hours, but then ultimately, the board, you know, would have to approve that position.
So, maybe we should have some kind of a form that we give everybody out there, what is the position you're looking for, what are you looking to accomplish?
Yeah, it's supposed to, right, just troll the various departments and saying, here's the program. What work do you have that could be accomplished, or you think would be helpful by someone in this program?
You know, like the library may have, well, we've got a project of 1,000 books that gotta be sorted out. Well, that's a project, that's, you know, and that's how, so then we vote yes, no, or whatever, and then it goes up on a list that this is, this is available. You see what I'm saying? But at least it's recognized out there. Because if you're leaving it up to the individual, then.
No, 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 no.
It's not gonna work.
It would never work that way.
No, it's a.
But that's the way I'm taking it here, okay?
No, it's, you know, all positions have to be approved by the Board of Selectmen.
The departments identify the requirements, and then we.
Right, but I'm saying, we need to, we need to get some kind of a form ahead of time that says this is what they're trying to accomplish, and, and some, you know, whatever, whatever they're, they want to do here.
Okay, fair enough. But let's come back to two things. We still need to talk about end-of-year transfers and what we're, our presentation to Finance Committee on Thursday. Mike apparently is supposed to come down here.
Yeah, I, you know, he said he'd have it sometime this morning.
At what time do you have to leave?
Eleven.
Eleven, okay. Let's, let's come back to our fiscal year 14 goals and end-of-year transfers, and let's jump to Center School Steering Group. This is, recall that when Jim Basic was here from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and we were submitting the application for the grant, he recommended that if we should receive the grant, he would highly recommend appointing a steering group for that project, the reuse of Center School, recommending someone representing the Board of Selectmen, someone representing the Housing Authority, and someone representing the Hatfield Redevelopment Authority. Remember, this is an economic development grant.
Can I recommend that we don't get involved in that? And the reason I'm saying that is because I've sat on quite a few of them, and what happens is, just because you're a selectman, they, they put you in a different category, and that's not, that's not okay. We're trying to work this thing out, but yet you're the head, so I'd like to just say, I'd like to eliminate the Board of Selectmen from participating in something like that.
Well, we could have a representative of.
That would be okay, you know.
Wouldn't have to be, I tend to agree with you. There's too many communities where we're on them, and there ought to be somebody that's giving us advice as opposed to us. We might as well just do it ourselves.
Because I find, I find it, you know, that they're looking up to us, or to me, or to you, or whatever, to make a decision, or when we talk, they listen because we're chief executive officers, and it shouldn't be that way, because we're, we're just like them in that committee, okay, trying to find a way, what's best for the community. So, you know, even though you can say that, and I've said it a number of times, it's still, your position holds a certain heart there, so. But like Jeff, you said, you know, we can appoint somebody in our.
Uh.
To represent us.
We have, do we have a recommendation from the Housing Authority? I know we have a volunteer.
We have a volunteer. No recommendation from the Housing Authority, but, you know, John Wilks is, you know, kind of more or less initiated this particular round, and so he, I know he's been very interested, and, you know, I emailed him to notify him that we had received the grant, and asked him if he was, you know, interested in being on the steering committee, and he said yes. So, because he's on, yeah.
Housing Authority.
Yeah, he's on the Housing Authority. Well, the other group that I thought we should have a representative from is the CPC.
From who?
Community Preservation.
Well, let's, let's drive the other one to ground first. Well. We don't want to step on the Housing Authority's toes and appoint their representative.
Right.
How about, who's currently chair?
I don't know.
All right, well, if you went back to the Housing Authority saying Mr. Wilks has volunteered, the Board of Selectmen are supportive, is he your post-representative on this committee? And then we could act on that.
Okay, the steering committee, I'd like to see some guidelines for the steering committee, what their guidelines are, and then, because you may, you may want certain people on there, like in the construction background, you may want two people on there, you may want.
You're reading my mind here.
Okay, yeah, so.
Because I, a second one, he's not here to defend himself, but I was thinking perhaps asking Bob Bartlett if he'd represent the Board of Selectmen.
I'm not sure if he's gonna be, we can ask him for that, but he's getting his health back together, so, and I value that. You know, Bob's been an asset to the town for a long, long time, and.
I'm just, I was just thinking of someone who could.
He'll be okay with that.
Because housing will be one piece, so John or someone there would be great.
How about somebody like Stanley Zanowski?
Not as a, see, you gotta be careful, not as a building inspector.
He's gotta be arms-length.
Yeah.
From things.
He tries to shy away from those because he's, he's the enforcement officer that gotta go in and deal with that.
He has to maintain his independence. Yeah. Well, let's, I'm just throwing, as one. We know, maybe, perhaps the way we ought to do this is invite Jim Basic back now, saying, okay, we've got the grant, the state is on board with PVPC managing this grant for us, which is great, because we don't have the staff to do this anyway.
Right.
And how do you envision this working group working with you, and, you know, what kind of skills you're looking, and then get a way ahead at that point?
Yeah, I'll, I'll give him a call today and see if he can make our next meeting.
Okay, that'd be great.
And he might have, he might have some kind of a format, or.
Yeah.
I'm sure he does, like.
What we're looking for, for a steering committee.
Town Hall renovations.
Okay. Well, as you know, we have put that project out to bid. We have a low bidder, Maroy Construction out of South Hadley. We are working on a contract that the contractor has basically signed off on, that Town Council has reviewed, and, you know, tentatively approved. The main issue with this project at this point is that we have a funding shortfall. And we dropped one of the alternates that, that was, you know, in the proposal. So, we currently have a funding shortfall of $17,927. So, we have four main options, as I see it, at this point. Number one, we can abandon the project, which in effect would just be kicking the can down the road, because none of these issues are gonna go away. And of course, you know, we've spent approximately $40,000 on engineering and design fees, so, you know, that money would have, would be wasted. Number two, we could have a special town meeting to get the additional funding. Since, you know, we've just turned the corner on a new fiscal year, we have no free cash, so we would have to transfer money from an existing appropriation into one of the, one of the funding accounts for this. That option would also, or may also have the effect of having to go out to bid again, because technically, we're supposed, supposed to have a contract in place within 30 days of the bid opening. So, actually, the 30 days was up last Friday. Currently, there is no issue with that. The contractor is aware of the hearing in August, so construction would not begin until then anyways. But with longer delays, that could be an issue. The third option, we could get the additional money, or request that the Finance Committee transfer money out of the FY13 Reserve Fund into one of the funding accounts for this project. You know, I wasn't sure about that one, when first thinking about it, but I double-checked with, with the Department of Revenue, and they said, you know, it's entirely the Finance Committee's prerogative, what they want to do with their reserve fund. There are certain restrictions of what they can do, but for the most part, it's their prerogative. The fourth option, and the option that I am, that I think makes the most sense, is that we use FY14 facilities maintenance money to make up the difference. I've talked with the accountant and the department head, Phil, and I've talked to the treasurer about that. You know, that, one of the things that money is used for is, you know, repair and maintenance of town infrastructure. One of the things that, a big part of this project is bringing the building, you know, up to current code, so I think it, it falls, you know, easily within that category. So, I think it falls, you know, easily within that category. In discussing it with the treasurer, you know, he said, he sees no problem with it as long as his department head, you know, is willing to make those authorizations. And, you know, I've certainly discussed this with Phil. And Phil, you know, agrees that, you know, that this makes sense. So, unless the board wanted to do something different, you know, Phil has the authority to authorize expenditures for this account, for this project.
One question. Okay, we've identified a potential source of funds. The town accountant, as I understand it, our DOR rep, town treasurer, all agree it's permissible to use that particular account for this purpose. The only other question I have, is it permissible to exceed the amount appropriated by town meeting for the project?
Appropriated for the facilities account or for the project?
For the project.
Exceed it?
Yeah. X was...
Mike, could you come up here?
It's Mike Lyons, Town Accountant, made a timely appearance. No, we're talking about, there's three issues that we're going to talk about with respect to the Town Hall renovation. One is, the bids have come in just over what was appropriated at town meeting for the project. And one approach Town Administrator has outlined is potentially using the facility maintenance account to make up that difference. And it appears folks are on board for that. My question, however, is one step back. Can we permissibly exceed the amount appropriated by town meeting for the Phase 1 renovation by using, you know, X was appropriated. I forgot what the amount, exact amount was.
Well, somebody, I assume some of the work that's going to be done is normal.
It is.
It would be considered normal.
Yeah.
Maintenance or upgrade. And I would think facilities management budget could be used. That's just my opinion.
My question is, why can't we ask the contractor to reduce it by $17,000? He's got the job.
Well, well, we can't do that.
Well, you can say that, Jesus, it's $17,000 over. We're going to have to re-put it out for bid.
Yeah. We can do that, and actually, that is the intent to do that. But we really can't have that discussion with them until we're under contract.
Yeah. I'm not signing the contract. It's over $17,000. You've got to do that beforehand.
Well, we can't. We'd have to put it back out to bid again.
Well, then, how about cutting the project by $17,000?
No, we...
And eliminating something. I don't know what. I'd have to look at it. That's what the architect's there for, okay? Maybe he reconsider $17,000 on shuffling the offices around, or whatever he's got in there for, whatever. See, I don't know what he's got in there.
That would be a change in the bid documents.
Yeah.
And we'd have to put it back out to bid again.
What, you'd have to put it back out to bid, no matter what? Because I don't, I don't think it'd be legal.
It wouldn't. Once, once we are...
I mean, we can cut. We can cut with our present contract. I mean, right now, I'm looking at $7,000. You and I talked yesterday. I mean, we've got that divider going in the meeting room. That's $7,000, right?
It is.
Eliminate it.
Okay, eliminate it. So, we're down to 11. Let's start.
Yeah. And then what else is there we can eliminate?
Huh? Do you mind putting, limiting a place with unpainted walls?
Well, we had, we had two alternates. And we could eliminate the two of them, and I've eliminated the second one. The, eliminating the first one presents other complications.
What are the alternates, Paul?
One of the, the alternate that's been deleted is blinds. And that was like $1,500, so we deleted that. The first alternate is the dividing wall in the meeting room, in the new meeting room.
Can always put that in the future.
Yeah. Well, you could. Yeah. It changes the, but that still leaves us $11,000 over.
Right.
And because of the way the bids came in, it also changes who the low bidder is.
Okay, question now on this...
Which presents some issues.
On this bid package, was it finished painting? Or, I mean, was, were the walls going to be, going to be finished?
Let's back up. We can't, we can eliminate, we could eliminate the two alternates. At this point in time, we cannot make any changes to it. Because if we're making changes to it, we're changing the bid documents, which means we'd have to go, we'd have to start all over again.
So, what's the third alternate, Paul? You said there was three alternates.
No, there's only two.
Only two alternates.
There's only two.
But back to my question, can we exceed the amount appropriated?
Well, I believe by law, I'm supposed to sign a contract as to appropriation. And if the contract was for more than what was appropriated, I guess I would...
I don't think you can sign it because it's more than appropriate, is right.
Enough money hasn't been appropriated to cover the contract. I don't think I could sign it.
Well, isn't that the question here? And I'm not trying to create a, I'm not trying to create a...
Well, I just...
I just want to do it right.
I'm just throwing that out now, because that's, that'd probably be my number-one answer.
So, I'm sure, how long would it be if we put it back out for bid? And what's the cost?
Couple of months.
Why does it have to be a couple of months? You have to do a register, National Register.
Have to do the central register.
Same old.
Have to do the whole, you know, there's a whole timetable.
I'd like to know if there's a legal way to do that without putting it back out for bid?
No.
If everybody voted, see, I don't know how the contract was bid, whether, you know, I mean, you have your alternates in there, but let's say, for instance, if we did away with a handicap bathroom, everybody bid on a handicap bathroom. But there are all different types of prices. So, one guy could bid one and the other one, and that might give him the job. Is that, that's what you're saying? That's the dilemma that we get into, right?
Right, right. Yeah. You know, everybody bid on, everybody bid on X project.
A specific project.
If you make any changes to it, it's Y project.
Yeah.
Oh, I see. Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
So, maybe we should add everything an alternate, and then they can choose what we want to do.
Like I said, once, once we have the project under contract, then we can sit down with the contractor and say, okay, where can we save a few bucks? And that's what the intent is now, you know, because, you know, we're going to use, you know, instead of using this window, we're going to use this window.
Once you, once you sign a document, that contractor says, you owe me X amount of dollars. And to sit there and say, hey, we're $17,000 over, we don't know where we're going to get it, can you do something? That's after the fact, and I don't, I feel very uncomfortable with that.
Yeah. I mean, there's, you know, any changes at this point would be a change order. I mean, there's change orders that increase the cost, and then there's change orders that decrease the cost. So, are we going to come up with $17,000 or more, you know, in potential cost savings? I don't know at this point.
Well, it's only a lot of money.
Well, the question that Mike just answered is, we can't sign the contract.
I mean, I'm not, I can't, because there isn't enough money appropriated.
Right.
For the project. And it's not going to be very easy to get it. Probably town meeting would be the only, I don't know.
Well, you know, well, the, unless the Finance Committee transferred the money out of the reserve fund, then there would be a transfer into, an actual transfer into one of those accounts.
I'm not sure if we can do that.
Well, according to, according to DOR...
Yeah?
Yeah.
It doesn't have to go to a budget account?
No, no. I spoke, I spoke with Terry Williams, who is our DOR representative, who is also the longtime chairman of the Dalton Finance Committee. And he said, I, you know, there's certain things that the Finance Committee cannot do with the reserve fund, but he says, I see no problem with this.
Well, he's the guy that I would ask, so...
Yeah. So, I already, I had, I had...
Can we get that in writing?
Yeah. I'm sure I can. Actually, I already asked him, though. I haven't gotten it yet.
Well, with that, then we could award the contract. But then, that would have to be after Thursday's meeting with the Finance Committee.
Right.
I'd like to, I'd like to move that we eliminate the dividing wall with $7,000. Get that out of the equation. No, he didn't do that.
We can't do that yet.
Why can't we do that yet?
It's a change order.
It's an alternate. We can vote on that.
No, you can, because it's an alternate.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
You can delete that, because it's an alternate.
It's an alternate.
Yeah.
We could do it, but as I just got through saying, that changes who the low bidder is.
That's what I'm saying. Any, basically what he's saying is...
And I just want to say, that, that presents a number of issues.
Okay, correct.
That I don't want to get into.
All right. So, can we get something from Terry to say that the approach you suggested about either Finance Committee, reserve, or...
What year would it be out of 13 or 14?
Pardon me?
What year reserve?
I would, you know, I would, I would say 13, because there's $45,000 in there. It hasn't been touched at all yet.
We're taking 30 of it, aren't we? I thought we were...
We were looking at other sources that Mike is going to talk to us about.
Okay. All right. Because I definitely want to see it come out of 13. I wouldn't want to see it come out of 14. That's our budget.
No, no.
You know, I don't want to touch anything out of 14.
No. It's too early.
All right. Bottom line, we want to do it right.
Exactly.
So...
Yeah.
All right. So, but, all right. So, we'll revisit this on Thursday with Finance Committee. This particular issue. The second issue has to do with the 12 August session with the Architectural Board regarding the variance to completing all the ADA requirements with this project. What's a permissible, how can we permissibly sign the contract in advance of 12 August? Since if 12 August, the board says, no, we don't accept your proposed phasing... I'm not, you know, it probably will. I'm just saying, how could, but how can we? If they don't, they don't. It's...
Well, we've proposed some language in the contract that, you know, contingent upon...
Okay.
An appropriate outcome, you know, at the A B hearing in August. Yeah, because if we're totally, if we're, they say, well, you know, yeah, you can only do this project, but you have to do all this, all the, you know, but you have to bring the building, you know, into total compliance, then it's a no-go. But that's a, you know, extremely unlikely scenario.
Well, I'm...
I'm a little confused at what's going on here, because the way I understood it is, we were under, when putting this money into this project, we were still under that guy, under the dollar figure that we had to be. We could realistically do this figure, do this project without jumping into the next level.
It's 30% of the assessed value. It's, and assessed value is what, $770, something thousand?
What happened is the assessed value went down. It was over a million to start with.
Right.
So, it's just a mechanical number that triggers compliance with ADA requirements.
It's square footage and assessed value are the two triggers.
Square footage impacted and assessed value trigger the requirements. And so, my, well, this is the third concern. We'll get to in a second. So, you think we can appropriately put that language in that conditional, a conditional contract?
Yeah. Yeah. Well, as long as the contractor is agreeable to it, and, you know, not sure about that yet. But, you know, I spoke to the architect and said, well, this is the issue, you know. We want to proceed here, but what if?
Okay, so, can I just...
Sure.
Bring something up, just for townspeople to relax a little bit, hopefully. But I don't want to spend the extra money myself. But we do have a couple other projects going on now. Paul, could you tell us what the savings would be on the garage roof? If we go with, do you know what, what we appropriated, what our savings are?
$16,000. $16,000.
$16,000.
$16,000? Okay, so now we're looking for, this is just monies. I'm not talking, we can transfer, obviously we can. But just for townspeople to know, we're saving $16,000 if we sign a contract with this contractor that...
For the highway garage roof.
For the highway garage roof is $16,000.
$16,000.
Okay, so now we're looking for $2,000 in reality. Am I right, Mike, by saying something like that?
The whole pot.
Right, the whole pot.
Yeah, we appropriated...
Now, what are we going to save on this garage out back here?
This, this project, I believe, is like $65,000 under.
Okay, so, what we have appropriated, or what we went through at town meeting, we, I guess we did the right thing by bidding or asking for the monies, hoping that we would come under contract.
Yeah.
Okay, so we've got two out of three that are way under, as far as I can see. And one that's $18,000. I just want townspeople to realize that we're not pulling all the time from, you know, that we're actually giving some money back. I mean, again, I don't want to spend the $18,000. But when I look at the overall, it's something that isn't going to raise taxes by any means, you know, anything like that. So, I just, I just want to make that point.
The bottom line here is, once you get the okay from Terry Williams, get it in writing, I think that would suffice moving forward.
Yeah, provided that, you know, we can, I can convince the Finance Committee. You know, it's their call.
Okay, so, if you get that from Terry before the meeting...
Yeah.
Okay, so we've got that. We're going to, we'll take up on Thursday. Assuming we get through that some way, it's legal. The other thing is, the contractual language will be contingent upon successful outcome of the 12 August Architectural Access Board variance hearing. Let's talk about that hearing. There's a, should be a pack, Exhibit A. It's in your package. Looks like this, Architectural EL. And there's a whole book of all the architectural drawings submitted by the architect to the board. But this, essentially the cover letter. And if you look at the last paragraph, it summarizes essentially what's being requested of the board. Again, for folks, we're talking about the Town Hall, completing, executing this Phase 1 contract, just simply working on the first floor, impacts a certain percentage, over 30% of the square footage of the building. It exceeds 30% of the assessed value of the building. Therefore, it triggers a requirement under the American for Disabilities Act as compliance with the ADA, and actually, some other code compliance, fire and electrical and others. But the proposal, which the architect felt was feasible, is outlined here in... But the proposal, which the architect felt was feasible, is outlined here in Paragraph Nine. And he's proposing that instead of the town of Hatfield, at this time, making the entire facility compliant, rather as, because of the cost and square footage impacted by Phase One, that the town commit to addressing this over a period of years. And here he's talking about in five years, doing a certain things, in seven years, doing a few other things, and in 10 years, over a decade, finishing it up. And this is the going in, in fact, this is what was submitted to the, to the board. In five, or sometime between now and five years, upgrade the existing accessible entry ramp, serving the lower basement level. In seven years, upgrade the existing entry ramp, serving the first floor. In 10 years, complete the building access to all levels. And he's really talking about there, the elevator going up to.
Most that we can commit to is to bring it forward to town meeting. That's the only thing we can commit to.
Well, that.
That's absolutely right.
We cannot go there and say, we are going to do this, because that's not true.
That's absolutely right.
We are, we're willing, the board of, our board is willing to bring this forward to town meeting in year five, year seven, and year 10 for these specific projects, but it's up to the town meeting to vote them.
Right.
Yeah.
That's all we can guarantee them.
Okay, I just want everybody to understand.
I just want to be clear on that.
Well, I think everyone is clear on that, but we can't spend money we don't have.
Right, exactly. Well, I don't want this committee, this board that we're going to be going before, to think, I don't want to lead them in a wrong direction here.
No.
Thinking that, you know, we'll move forward on this in five years, when that's not the truth. We'll move forward on it in five years, but if town meeting says no, subject to town meeting, absolutely.
No, they understand that.
Okay.
They see this sort of thing all the time.
The architect, Mr. Shea, says they're very receptive to, well, number one, the package he's prepared outlines everything that needs to be done. He says this occurs frequently. If we needed to change for five years, seven years for the first one, they're very receptive, as long as it's simply not ignored.
Okay.
So that's how we're going to go on 12.
Right, just one thing, Paul.
Yes.
Again, for townspeople, all of these, the basement level, is that in design, is that a completed design for us at this time?
Pardon me?
The five-year upgrade for the accessibility entry ramp, serving the lower level, that, is that design completed? Is that in their hands?
No, all we've done at this point is schematic designs, not actual construction documents.
How about the?
Only because the code may change, that's why you don't want to do that.
But, yeah, you don't want to get too, you don't want to get.
I mean, most of the legwork has been done on it.
Yeah, we have, we have a basic plan, but, you know, as Ed said, you don't want to put, you don't want to spend money on construction documents until you're ready to go to bed.
Right, but I'm just, basically, it is ready to basically just get done. I mean, we have the design in place.
We have, we have a design.
The design is not going to go out again for another bid and redesign the whole thing and everything else.
Well, you know, all I can, you know.
Depends if our board changes and their board changes.
But that's true, too. That's another thing we can't guarantee, but my point.
Five years from now, none of us may be here.
My whole point of this whole project was, that's it. I don't want to see another design study done on this town hall.
You want to spend another $30,000? We're up to about $150,000 now, right?
Well, all we could do is propose.
Yep, okay, so we're on agreeance to that.
Okay.
We need, we don't, we need a vote on that, or not?
Yeah, well, please, yeah, let's do that.
All right.
Vote to support this proposed, is there a motion to support the time phase compliance with ADA requirements for the Town Hall as submitted by Architect E L?
I'll move that.
Second.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Town Hall Garage renovation.
So we have, we signed the contract with Evergreen Construction at the last meeting. The architect has issued a notice to proceed to the contractor for July 22. I haven't heard back whether, you know, that's acceptable to them. I mean, they stated that they'd be able to begin that project towards the end of the month, but anyways, the notice to proceed has been issued, and that's where we stand.
Okay, the garage roof?
Highway garage. So we put that project out to bid. T. Loose Construction from Leeds is the low bidder. And I've done my due diligence, did some background, got some references. They've submitted their insurance documents to me. So I think with that one, I've also sent him a draft contract for him to review, so I haven't heard back from him yet. But I think this morning, you know, even though we don't have an actual contract assigned, I think the board can make the award for that project to T. Loose Construction. Oh, and the amount is $32,300.
Is there a motion to approve or award the highway garage roof contract to T. Loose Construction in the amount of $32,300?
So moved.
I abstain. I have a family member that works for the company.
Oh, okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Let's do end-of-year transfers. During the months of May, June through 15, July, the Board of Selectmen, subject to review by the Finance Committee, is able within certain bounds to reallocate funds from accounts that are short to, or accounts that have surpluses to accounts that are short to close out the fiscal year 13 budget. And we have a session with the Finance Committee scheduled for this Thursday at 6:30.
Jeff, I'd like to.
Where we're going to do this, yes.
I'd just like to back up just one little bit. Town Hall Garage renovation, when is the, we were supposed to have a meeting last week for pre?
Oh, we're still trying to schedule a pre-construction meeting. It hasn't been scheduled yet.
So that hasn't been scheduled yet?
No, no.
Okay, all right. Because I'd like to be there on that meeting.
Mike, want to walk us through?
Yes, Jenny finished a warrant last evening about nine o'clock. She'd been on vacation for a while, so I told her to give me a call. I told her to give me a call if she was able to run the checks last night and post, post all the budget accounts. So I came in and got the most up-to-date as far as the expenses go. And I just got the last payroll, which is a split payroll. Half of it was FY13 and half was FY14. So the numbers, the top two numbers there, the overdrafts, the cemetery and council on aging, they're going up by a few hundred dollars more. But Janey had already submitted a request for a financial transfer to the Finance Committee, which I assume will be incorporated to tomorrow's meeting. And I will update the expense numbers right up through Thursday. Whatever, whatever bills come in, I'll, you know, if they affect any of these numbers, I'll update them. But even after Thursday being only the ninth, there could be other bills that come in, but I can't imagine it would be, it may not affect these, and they might not be significant if they do. So right now, we got about $46,000 of deficit accounts. And then down the bottom there, I just put them in, the FinCom has the 45,000, but that sounds like it could change. And on the highway, on the highway, I got the total of all their budgets excluding Enterprise Fund, and we can take, of any department, we can take up to 3% or $5,000, whichever is larger.
Mike, are these figures like a highway? You got $16,000. Is that over budget?
No, that's what's available. That's what we can get from the highway, the DPW.
Okay, so this is, this is the 5% available.
Yeah, that's 5%.
That we can legally take from each department.
3%.
3%.
Yes.
3% of the departmental budget or $5,000, whichever is greater.
Greater, that's, that's why the next five, I just picked five of the, kind of the departments that had the most money in them, and 5,000 is the most you can take from them, so I put those down. So you can see that there's $40,000 more available than we need right at this moment. But like you say, you're probably going to get some money out of the Finance Committee Reserve, but there still should be plenty.
Okay, so we're $46,972.
We're short here.
It's not working?
I don't, I'm, what's wrong with my math?
Oh, because where?
If, if you left the Finance Committee Reserve out of it.
Oh, the whole thing, or?
Oh, okay, so you're, it's 41, roughly 41, taking the others toward the 46. So we'd need still about $7,000 or $6,000.
Are you going to use all the reserve?
We don't use any, any.
No, 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 we didn't use any.
Oh, we didn't use any, oh.
Because you're talking about a lien on that, are you not?
Pardon me?
You're talking about a lien on that 45.
Oh, with the, with the Town Hall project?
With the Town Hall project.
Yeah.
Seventeen, or 18?
18.
18.
Yeah. So.
So that would not go down to 23 or something like that, or 27?
So 45 minus 18.
It'd be $39,000.
Minus another, what, $7,000?
Seven.
So minus another 25 out of the, out of the 45.
61.
And that would.
It would be $38,000.
Okay, so we have, there's more than enough, and there is tailings from various projects to cover down.
Yeah, and I did a preliminary look, too, at, I mean, because there, I know that there's other accounts here with additional money in them.
There is. I just took the bigger ones. There's more available if we.
Yeah.
Okay. So the proposal will be take from DPW on down as submitted through the police, plus, what's it?
$7,000.
Whatever, $7,000 or so out of the Finance Committee Reserve to cover down.
Which would be $38,000.
To cover down the 46. That'll be our.
The 46 is going to change slightly. I already know that from the salaries that have been paid.
Up or down?
The deficit will go up. Because of these payroll that just was processed yesterday. So the top two are, cemetery is going to be another $530 in the hole. That'd be $780, I guess. And the council on aging is going to be 394 more than what's up there. Janey requested 2,000, but she isn't going to need it all.
So lower another $1,000.
Right now.
Yeah.
But there's other accounts that are just under this $5,000 that you could.
Are we going to have that for Thursday?
We have to.
What? I'll have what I, whatever's coming to my office on Thursday.
Otherwise, it's going to be unpaid bills, Mike. We don't have, if we don't have it by Thursday, it's unpaid bills.
If we don't have one, well, I don't, because we can pay till the 15th, so bills could be coming in the 10th.
That's when our transfer authority.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I mean, you can, we can have overdrawn, overdrawn budget accounts, but it just has to be raised on next year's recap. I mean, if they're, I can't.
Yeah, we're down, we're down to.
I, hopefully, no one's holding on to some huge invoices.
Some big bills, yeah.
Don't want to do that.
No.
I know. I mean, you know, you try to be responsible for your budgets, you know, I mean, just, just.
But Bill, invoices do, invoices do come in, you know, during the first couple of weeks of the next of July.
Phil, just a quick question, 2581 from Highway Department, what's?
Yeah, I was shocked to see that myself. I have to take a look at that, because this just came in.
I thought we were in good shape on that.
No, we were in good shape in salaries.
Salaries were in good shape.
But what's the expense part? I mean, I guess, if we don't have it this year, I'd certainly going to push next year for accountability on why, if you need X amount of dollars, why do you need it? And give me an explanation and a printout that you had this bill, this bill, and this bill, or this is why the account is overdrawn. You've got to have some accountability here on why.
Beginning in about April, when I send out a monthly budget report to the departments, I kind of put down the bottom, you know, we're getting near the end of the year.
Yep.
Keep an eye on the balance in your budget.
Okay, so if you've got anything else for us, you'll get it to Paul?
Yeah, I'll give it to Paul.
On Wednesday or Thursday? Well.
I'll wait till Thursday.
All right.
Yeah, the meeting's Thursday evening.
Thursday night, 6:30.
Thursday.
Okay, I got another, on the Town Hall, I want to bring that up, $15,000 over on IT. I mentioned to Paul a couple weeks ago, we talked about IT stuff, and how we're going to curb that, and what's going on. Have you done anything with that?
Well, not yet, no. But, you know, as I pointed out at the last meeting, for this year, the IT budget was considerably less than it was the previous year, which is why that number is so big. I mean, I don't, I, it was $27,000 the previous year. It was knocked down to 19. For this year, you know, I don't know why that occurred. So, you know, clearly $19,000 was not enough, but.
Well, it is enough if we find out what's going on.
Yeah, and the other, and the other issue that I know that occurred this year is that we needed to purchase another server, and I know that that was not budgeted for. So those are the two, two main issues that I know about. We have, we have had a lot of issues with computers and laptops. We've had to buy two new laptops this year. We've bought three new computers this year, so, you know, all these things add up.
But also on the IT side, when they come in, I mean, they've been here a lot. They've been here on a weekly basis.
They have.
Okay, and if it's, if it's something to do, I mean, before, we never had any problems with, or very few problems, and now we're having a lot of problems, and that just raises the flag of what's going on. And that's why I question what's going on, and they're either going to fix the problem, or we'll find somebody that can fix the problem. And I'm not sure if that's the case, but that's something your job is going to be to determine that.
Yeah, no, yeah, I think, you know, one of the issues that we have, we have some aging equipment, and, you know, we've started to replace some of it.
I thought we had all brand-new.
Oh, not, not at all, no.
Three years ago, we bought a server for that room. I mean, it's brand-new. It's like three years old, and I think there was one last year that was put in. I mean, so aging equipment, I don't know what he's talking about. I thought we.
I'm talking about computers. We've had the building inspectors, you know, laptop died on them, the police chief's laptop died on them. We've had to replace the secretary's computers. I believe we had to get a new computer up at the Water Department. I have a, I have a list of all the computers, which Perigis put together for us.
Okay.
Which basically characterizes all the computers in town, one, two, three. The ones are the ones that need to be replaced almost immediately, and that's the majority of the computers.
Phil?
Yes.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Mike. Whately Water Lines.
Oh, really haven't had any contact from Whately, or I know Tony's been talking to some people out there. They have one request in, and, I mean, the timeframe for us is ticking there. I mean, we've been notifying them that they have to get on the ball and to, you know, complete them two or three connections out there. But to date, we haven't really heard when, and, you know, they haven't notified us that we can shut our main off, so I'm assuming that the project. I mean, we've been notifying them that they have to get on the ball and to, you know, complete them two or three connections out there. But, to date, we haven't really heard when, and, you know, they haven't notified us that we can shut our main off, so I'm assuming that the project that's on their side of the line hasn't been completed. It's still leaking.
About the other project up on, has, has Tony talked with anybody over there about that other?
Pantry Road?
Pantry Road?
No.
I mean, that's, that's still okay, but it's.
That's still okay, yeah, you know, our concern again is, you know, the main leaking out there, and if it fails. Can we confirm that there is a pipe from Whately Water into their houses? See, I don't know that, I mean, that's just hearsay that I've heard.
I can confer.
Can we confer that? If we can confer that, my concern is if ten thousand gallons a day we're losing, how much does it cost, how much does that come down to a day in dollars?
Kinda, kinda bill the Whately.
No, what I'm saying is, let's, let's look at that, and if it means.
Well, if they're, if they're, if they're services to their house, it's only a matter of the people hiring a plumber to hook it in, that's the, that's what it is, it's up to the homeowner.
But I mean, if they can't do that, then it'd be to our advantage to take care of that, because it's costing us X amount of dollars, that's my point. Okay?
I mean, if you wanna do that, we can do that, but I don't wanna, you know.
You know, I don't wanna open up a can of worms, but if nothing's moving on that, we gotta get it moving, because, you know.
I, I, I've, there's another issue there that I don't wanna bring up on camera, okay? So, I mean, I can let you two know in the executive session, I mean, it's not a big issue with us at all, but.
But let's just confirm that there is the pipes into the houses, that's, that's what we need to confirm from Whately Water Line.
Yeah, I mean, they told us, they, they told me directly, they're there.
Yeah, but can Tony?
They, they put them in there, they put them in every house.
Right into the basement.
Yeah, because that's a whole new system, that's a brand new system, basically, it's maybe twenty-five, thirty years old. And as they went down, all they did was just bore right into the basements, and the, the pipe sits there. And that's it, and they just waited for people to come onboard.
So for them to say that they're not gonna do anything is, is.
Well, it's basically up to the homeowners of.
To do that, yeah.
I mean, I don't know what the plumbing cost would be to, you know, I mean, they'd have to get the meter from the town of Whately and have a plumber put it in.
Well, you're suggesting that we have, if absent Whately acting on this, or the homeowner acting, we do it and bill them for it, part of their water bill?
Whatever, I don't know what, what we can do to make this thing, you know, move.
I mean, I, I don't know, how did we do it back when the, when they installed meters?
When we installed meters?
Yeah, I mean, cause every house had to get plumbed in order to accept the meters.
In the very beginning, if anybody signed up for a meter, they got a meter in their house free of charge. But it stopped after, I think it was two years or something like that. And if they didn't, if you didn't jump on a bandwagon, then you had to pay X amount of dollars to put the meter in.
I mean.
So the town paid the plumber to plummet?
The town paid the plumber to plummet in and, and put it in place, yeah, so.
I mean, you're talking three, three residents over there. The other two residents.
He's got a meeting at ten.
Thanks, Paul.
The other two residents have put their, their water main, I, I think it's like a two-inch line.
Yes.
From what I understand, those are Whately residents, however, they do realize they maintain that line, and that is it, they have no problems with it.
So you'll, you'll check into it further?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay.
What about the individual, and it was raising a legal issue about disconnect?
That's the issue that I will discuss later.
We'll wait until you do more research on it and get back to us, okay?
It's an interesting issue, to say the least.
Okay, well, keep us. Transmission line?
I do have the, I don't know if you have it, do you have the schedule that I?
Yeah.
Saw the schedule, but I also saw the print, and it doesn't make sense to me a little bit. Not sure where we're starting and where we're ending here, Phil.
This is just along the, the West Street.
This is, this is this, the schedule.
I've got this on the.
We do have, we're, we're talking about the transmission line coming down from Rocks Road, and you recall in a previous session, we've encountered some issue when the state inspected the bridge, they're intending to come over the water line over Chestnut Street, over, over ninety-one on, on the bridge, uh, there's deficiencies with respect to the integrity of the bridge and its ability to hold that pipe. And they offered us the opportunity to fix their bridge for them, and we declined. We're looking at, uh, going underneath ninety-one and the, and the railroad. And we needed some approvals from Mass DOT, and apparently we've got those now.
Yes, they're in hand, yes, signed off, approved, as you can see.
Just so you guys should know, I, I was also talking with a gentleman that worked for a contractor here in town. And back when they were building ninety-one, the contractor advised the state to put sleeves under the road just in case something would've happened here, and they just ignored it. And now it's costing us money, so is there any way that we can recoup anything, you know? I guess that's what I'm looking at.
Yeah, and that makes total sense to do something there, cause it's cheap, back, back then it was cheap anyways.
Exactly.
Today, it's not cheap. Yeah, so all the approvals from SDOT's in, just cause, we'll step back a bit, cause we split the contract, huh? A lot of people aware that we're going from the reservoir down Rocks Road to the bridge, that's as far as we can go until we.
We're gonna be on the side of the bridge, right? On the south side of the overpass?
No.
No, the north side.
North side, or.
Why are we going on the north side? I thought this was all on the south side.
Pipe jacking will be on the north side because the town owns property there.
There, remember they were lining it with the old, original Chestnut Street? Which they realigned when they put the bridge in there.
Yeah, but that's south of Chestnut Street. The town owns. We don't own anything to the north, the house is right there to the north.
Yeah, but if you recall how the, when you used to come over the railroad track, it bowlegged off to the right and swung around back out to the, and that's where, we're, we're using that old right away.
Yeah, we, we don't have to do any land taking there.
And, and then what, are you gonna go under Chestnut Street by the bridge to get on the other side?
Cause we have to go under the tracks there, yes.
My, my looking, I mean, looking at the whole thing, is there's houses that are close to the road there, and, and I don't know how close we're gonna be.
Well, where the.
If you're going on the north side, I thought it was all surveyed on the south side, going through the swamp area.
It is, that's, that's.
That's what I'm asking, my, my side.
We have to cross the road now because of not being able to hang it on the bridge.
Wow.
Yeah.
If we went on the south side, then you'd just go straight shot right down through, and you'd eliminate a lot of problems.
Well, as I noticed, remember, here's the railroad track, here's Chestnut Street, the original road kinda bowed like that.
Where the, where the compost.
And out to Route five and ten, that's how the road went, and you, we're using that, all that right away that.
What, what happens now is, the, the road comes out like this to.
Yes.
Okay, so, my thought would be to come across Route five and come right straight up to here, okay? Instead of going this side, and then now we're gonna go across here and then up this way. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And that adds a lot of expense to it.
Well, I don't know, maybe they're just going like that, but I don't know how the.
Well, there's a house, you can't do that, cause there's a house right here. Or, oh, yeah, okay, yeah, because the house is here, you could come out here.
The only thing that's set up there is the compost facility, right, the guy makes compost there, that's town property right in there.
Right in over here on the north.
Yeah, there's a, there's a house right here. A house down in here.
So, okay, that, well, that makes sense then.
Yeah, cause we try, he tried to stay away from taking property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wants the plan changed.
This is where the guy, with the celery on, sign on the barn is right there.
Right, he's, he's just north of that.
Okay, so that, you're coming in that side.
Old Zapka Farm.
Well, I wonder, well, they might be able to go at a diagonal underneath that train thing.
Yeah.
The train, uh, bridge.
Yeah, I mean, we have the permit to jack under the tracks, I mean, it's just a matter of.
But the thing is, the more you, you jack under, the more expense you're gonna incur too.
Yeah.
And ninety-one is a big expense.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
There's nothing that we can put a temporary up over the top of the bridge, huh?
No, we tried to hang it on the north side, they wouldn't let us. Until they repaired the bridge, you know, that was our letter to them, that we will hang the pipe suspended off the north side of the bridge until you repair the bridge, the utility bay on the south side, and they said, no way.
There's no emergency funding to help us out?
They said, you can repair our bridge.
There's no emergency funding that they can, they can help us out with?
Not that I'm aware of.
Can we check with somebody there?
There, there's so many bridges.
Talk to Mike about a grant for.
Mass Works, yeah, he said he's gonna look into it, but, again, it's economic money, you know, it's not.
But I mean, I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying.
We're trying to plead the case, let's put it that way.
Yeah, we're trying to plead the case, Brockway Smith is right there.
We're trying to.
Okay, and they, they occupy a lot of, I mean, they have a lot of, a lot of people working for them, a lot of employees.
So that's the schedule, as you can see, it looks like construction will start mid-September.
Okay.
Be bidding it shortly. While we're trying to re-permit for the going under ninety-one. The other thing I have is.
How deep are they going?
Well, they have to, I don't know what the jack's gonna be, it depends on the elevation, how we have to go.
Because they just put that new, um, fiber optic cable down ninety-one, and I don't know how deep that is.
I'm hoping below that.
Okay.
That's what Dig saves it for.
That's right. Uh, the other thing that's in your packet is the notice to proceed for, um, this contract that you signed with some Co-Eco for the Connecticut River Bank stabilization. Uh, we have a notice to proceed July sixteenth, so, anytime now, you're gonna see people down there. Tomorrow, we're having a pre-construction meeting in the morning down on Bridge Lane with the contractor. We have to do all the work in low flow, which is between August and, I mean, July and August, so.
It's not doing low right now.
No, the low flow isn't low.
I, I mentioned this to you, but the, what's the schedule for the gas line?
The gas line's still being permitted, so I, it's not gonna be anytime soon.
Okay, so it's no.
There won't be no.
The little area there, be putting in the gas line same time they're.
I think, I gotta, uh, they're gonna be set back, I think.
Yeah, it's coming back to where they ended before the barn, so, because they have to go all the way from there and go in directional bore or under there.
There's just not a lot of setup area or anything.
I mean, if, if, if push comes to shove, it's gonna be, gas companies gonna wait, that's.
That's correct.
We've only got a certain.
This is ready to go, so, but I don't see any problem, because they haven't even been permitted through it yet. I know they're applying, but I think they're looking at next year's construction, so.
Okay.
Uh, the other thing is that I told you at the last meeting that we've looked at the chapter ninety funding of the hundred and eighty-eight thousand, and it seems that with the cost of blacktop coming down to sixty-six and change, that all the projects that were listed at town meeting are a go, uh, it's just a matter of being assured again that the state is gonna give us the one eighty-eight. I mean, I've seen some communication, but nothing officially from the chapter ninety program that supports the one eighty-eight, so, we're waiting for that letter, but we're ready to go with the projects. I guess the la, I guess the last thing is the, uh, the water abatement. That was before you at the last meeting, and that asked me to take a look at previous bills. I don't know if you have that, but I have it. Got the collector to give me what the previous billing was. As she's looking for an abatement just on the sewer side because of the hydrant that was leaking in the barn, uh, the usage went up a little more than fifty percent because of that leak.
Okay, but I, I also.
What was the policy?
The policy is.
What's the past precedent that you're talking about?
We've done it, and one case that I looked back into, we had abated the sewer side of it, uh, but then we rewrote the policy. The rules and regs, we rewrote it to make it specific what we could abate.
Cause we're having problems with that, right?
Correct.
Cause there's no way to say, you know, whether it was lost or whatever.
Correct, we rewrote the, we rewrote the abatement rules and regs, and there only is a couple things considered, with a new pool liner, a new pool repair, the filling of initial pool that are abated. Or if it's a faulty meter, which it's not, so, the abatement policy is those three criterias and not because you have a leak.
I'm over that, we deny the abatement?
Is there a second?
I mean, I, I just, I still have an issue with that kind of thing, I mean, if you've got a, if you've got a pipe in your backyard that's leaking.
And I, I watch mine constantly, I, I check my.
I'm just saying, but I'm.
My hydrant, I don't know how many times.
But I, I don't, I just don't feel it's right for, for somebody to pay a sewer line, I mean, for the sewer fee, when it's, they're not using it, basically, I mean, it's what, what's the difference between that and a pool liner, I guess, I guess that's my big question. I don't see a difference, but, I mean, that's, that's me. I just feel it, it's, it's, it's kind of unfair, but.
Well, the sewer and the water is unfair, the only way we can do it is separate them, okay? Or, they have the meters, and that will tell you how much you're running the sewer and how much you run the water.
If, the water department can justify that that thing was leaking because it was out in the barn, right?
That's what happened, there was a leak in it.
And it's leaking.
There's a hydrant in the barn that was leaking.
I mean, I, I, I mean, I, I know this has happened in the past, I fought about it in the past, and I'll probably fight about it until the thing I dropped in, but that's okay. I, I just think it's unfair, I really don't.
What do you propose?
I, I propose.
Change the policy to, all, all I care about is we're consistent.
As it's, as, if the water department goes out there, it, it would be up to the.
You're seconding it for discussion.
Yeah.
Second what? I didn't, I just.
Are you, are you seconding it for discussion, otherwise we can't discuss?
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, for discussion only. Now you can go ahead, sorry.
I get one with that, I'm sorry. You wanna give me one with that, don't you? Okay, I will, well, no. If, if the water department, Tony goes out there, or whoever's on the, in charge of water department, and they can justify saying, okay, that, that guy's got a hydrant in his barn, it's been leaking, you see the water bubbling out, it's running across his barn out in the field, or if it's out in the field, which has happened in the past, where it was an elderly lady, if I remember, right?
That's the case, I remember.
That's correct.
All right, and I fought about that one, and it was, I mean, it, it stuck, she had to pay, but I, I, to this day, I just feel it's wrong, because if you know it was going across their field and not down that sewer line to be treated.
That's, that's the issue, let me clarify that then, so what you're saying is that you don't have a problem with the water, the water they pay, because.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, they gotta pay for the water.
Sewer that you're concerned about, so the sewer.
And that's what, that's what we're looking at right now.
Sewer would be looked at, how many gallons of water they used last year versus this year during those months?
And, you know, I have the numbers here, it's just a matter of.
I mean, in, in the case of the elderly lady, I mean, she doesn't walk out in her field. And I, I think a lot of this happened in winter months or whatever.
That's when this building was from, through the winter.
You know, so, I mean, it, it's happened on a couple occasions, I know that, and I, I just, I don't, I don't think it's right, you know, I mean.
And I worry about mine all the time, I've got one younger too.
He's, he's willing to pay the water.
Yeah, I mean, the water, I, I agree, they have to pay for the water, but as far as the sewer, I mean, I, I don't see a big difference between that and the pool liner personally. What's the difference? If you can explain that one, let me know.
Well, I thought that when we wrote the policy, we did. Well, I thought that when we wrote the policy, we did it on a basis of the app of the abatement, that we would take into consideration of, I know we have three criterias, but I'm pretty sure that we, there's language in there that says, that states that we'll take it in that individual abatement to make that decision.
I think I argued the same thing the last time we were trying to do this.
What?
I was arguing that same point as you're arguing now.
I'm telling you about the sewer.
Well, we don't want to open up the can of worms either there.
But the minute you will.
I'm just saying, I'm just stating what the policy reads. I mean, that's the policy.
It's the sewer part that, you know, I don't know how many, you know, let's say, for instance, if if somebody had the water line break, but they they got an extra horse or an extra cow that use more water this year than last year, so, you know, how do how do we?
Yeah, you have to justify it's a leak.
Yeah.
I mean, you have to make that justification.
Even if you look at last year's figures and they they changed the way they're doing business.
When, you know, he said that his water bill had doubled, the sewer and water bill had doubled, that he thought something was a matter, that, you know, Tony went out there and took a look, and, you know, he confirmed that the hydrant had been leaking through the winter in the barn. That's what happened. So that was confirmed. It's not that he had five extra horses or.
So so if we if we get a situation like this, and we're just discussing, can we do, you know, discount them three quarters of of the water that was lost on sewer? You know, instead of doing the whole hundred percent, take a variety of that, because you don't really know what, how much was used in the house, or he had extra guests for a month or two months. You don't know that.
Surely, put the figure of the abatement at anything you want. You can abate whatever you want.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I I don't have a problem abating the sewer because we know that it went out water, but I don't know if it should be a whole hundred percent. Okay?
I think maybe some like three quarters or.
Yeah.
Let's keep it keep it simple. So.
So from.
So for the.
Well, let's just discuss this abatement. The abatement, he went from eleven thousand six hundred gallons, the first billing, to twenty-five thousand eight hundred gallons. On the sewer side, he, his sewer bill went from five hundred and thirteen dollars to fourteen hundred and seventy dollars. So you're talking about eight hundred and fifty dollars more during that two batch break there, the six months.
So I guess if we're trying to create a policy, you know.
It has to be by the individual abatement. I mean, what comes in here? Because, you know, we don't know. I mean, somebody could come in and say, my water bill is tripled, and you know why? Or because your sprinklers run all day. We don't know that. But if you confirm it's a leak, it's a leak. This was a leak. This is definitely was a leak.
Saying is, you don't know the other particulars that happened on the farm or the.
I don't know that. All I know is that there was a water leak in the barn. That's all I can tell you.
Well, let let's do two things. Let's parse, it seems to be consensus about clarifying the policy to provide for relief on the sewer side when there's a leak that can be.
Justified.
Justified through the abatement and DPW review. And so that's one action to have DPW come back with some proposed language that clarifies that in the DPW rules and regs.
But he, I mean, he.
And then the second thing is to deal with this immediate case. If if we did that, then how much of the sewer would we abate here?
One hundred percent is eight hundred and fifty seven dollars.
Well, you didn't have that anywhere.
That's basing it on.
That's basing it on just on the billing.
On just on the on the numbers.
Right.
Okay, but I'm I'm saying, is there anything that changed from last year to this year? We don't know.
I couldn't tell you that.
Okay. And that's what, you know, I I mean, maybe the abatement form, if you're gonna do, if we're gonna change this, maybe ought to state in here, okay, is there's any conditions that changed, you know, I mean, you know, if they add if they added ten more pe- ten more cows, or they put an apartment in and it's more, you know, I'm not saying that this gentleman's doing that, I'm just saying.
Right, yeah.
The policy.
Yeah, and I understand that. We don't know what happened with, you know, whether it's him or if it's someone else in town. You don't know if they had a family there for half the year. You don't know that.
I I guess what I'm asking is, we need more information from him to determine the abatement. One, my question to him would be, has anything changed in the past year? If he's been living there all by himself for the last ten years and nobody's, there's nothing changed, he didn't have any daughter, with three kids come in and live with him, that they're doing laundry every day. You see what I'm saying? Circumstances can change.
Oh, absolutely.
That add to the the the.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
The the, you know.
But under this, under this abatement that's before you, nothing changed. Nothing has changed. Just the leak.
And you're sure of that?
I'm positive of that.
Okay.
That's the only thing that's changed here. But I agree with you. If down the road, if something comes before this board or before my department, that we have to ask those questions.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, you'll take care of that in some new language to add to your DPW rules and regs. We just need to be consistent to everybody.
Yeah.
It feels like they're being treated fairly. So there's a motion and second on the table to not approve.
Not to approve the abatement.
So you want to kill that one first?
I want to kill that one first, yeah.
All right, I have a vote on that. All in favor of not approving the sewer abatement?
Motion's dead. Declare the motion dead.
Everyone votes no.
Now, the new motion will read.
New motion is to, is there a motion to approve abatement of the sewer in the amount of eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars? This bill of one thousand four hundred and seventy dollars and sixty cents?
What's the five twenty-eight ninety in here?
No, that that was from last time. Till we, that was before we had the bills. Now we have the bills and know the exact.
He's got specifics.
Now, do you want to do this now, or do you want him to come back with some kind of?
No, we've already got the information for this one.
Okay. All right, I'll make the motion that way.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor? I.
I.
And the other thing for DPW is to go.
We'll put a little language.
Clean up the language.
We'll put a little language in there.
So basically, we're changing policy here.
Yes.
And you'll make note of that in the in the policy?
Yes.
Bill, do you have anything else?
I don't.
We've got.
We've got.
Several several things here.
We've got Bill Young, we're still on the DPW Bill Young organizational proposal.
Had Bill Young organizational proposal?
Yes. Is that to be discussed in open session? That's my question, I guess. You have the proposal in front of you?
Well, without getting into numbers, and basically, what what we have here is you're you're asking to put in for a new equipment laborer. You're asking to increase the water highway department, the superintendent's pay. You're asking to appoint a lead position and increase the operator to lead. And then also the tree warden. You'd be looking for an increase to be tree warden, I'd come underneath the, he'd come underneath the DPW director. So that's what you're looking for.
Correct.
There's, okay. And we're abolishing the highway superintendent position. Removing the tree warden responsibilities to the director DPW. We're moving the administrative responsibilities of the highway superintendent to a redefined highway slash water superintendent position. We're using the former highway superintendent bill to establish a new highway lead position. Transferring a current employee to the new highway lead position. We're backfilling the vacated equipment laborer position created by that transfer.
Yes, yes.
I had to write it down myself to get it straight.
Yes, it's a.
I was watching. Who's on first? And then the, there is some salary compensation proposals associated with that with creating the new highway water superintendent, with reallocating the tree warden function, with creating the lead highway position, and then just a rehire of the backfill of the which is not an increase, it's just what you pay that position, equipment labor.
I personally, my own feeling is, I I mean, now I'm having to look at the figures because I have to, it's gotta go down because I'm I'm in agreeance with the new equipment labor operator at forty-three thousand ninety-six dollars.
It's per our contract anyway, isn't it?
That's under, yeah, that's hiring another individual to.
Right.
Just a labor, okay? The water highway superintendent, I I mean, to me, Tony, and that's who, that's, well, let's just leave it at the superintendent. There's job descriptions that have to be done here, or what's what's the proposed job description? I guess that's where I want to go with this, okay? What is his duty's gonna entail? And if it's gonna entail doing all the the bookworking, all the the figures, monitoring, keeping track of all the numbers and stuff, it doesn't seem that, you know, the figure that's quoted here is not, to me, wouldn't be sufficient enough. But then you've also got a vehicle for responding, okay? The question I have in the vehicle responding, is it gonna be the water truck that's responding? Is it gonna be another vehicle? We send that water truck out of town, it's a big expense to, that's, it takes a lot more gas than, or diesel, whatever it is, to to run it back and forth. So if we're gonna get into that kind of stuff, then we ought to be thinking about getting a couple of light vehicles, lightweight vehicles, half-ton trucks or something, something that's more energy efficient than sending something like that out of town. So if we're gonna get into that part, the next question is the lead position, okay? If you've got four guys, three guys, and everybody knows their job, why do you need a lead position when, you know, one person can deal with that? And that that's my take on it, especially at, you know, at the eight thousand dollar figure here. I have a big problem with that, okay? And then the tree warden, okay? I I I'm not sure how I feel about that yet, okay? And that's, you know, increasing your salary, okay, that much. I think that's something that we have to have to really think about and discuss. And those are, that's my input on it.
Jan, you have comments?
Uh, yeah, I did look it over. I can't find it now. I had a couple of copies, but.
Here.
I I think it's something that we ought to try out, see how it's gonna operate. If it doesn't operate the way it should be operating, we go back to square one. And we look for a new road superintendent or highway superintendent and and I mean, to me, I guess, I I look at it as cutting a a supervisory position out of the works, basically, is what we're looking at, and I think that's why I kind of like this setup. Like I say, I I don't, I really don't, we're maybe not saving all that much money, but and number one, we're not really gonna be paying another supervisory position, okay? And we are gonna end up getting a new equipment operator and laborer. So that's gonna basically build up our workforce. So I I I think we should give it a try personally, but I'm one member.
How do you feel about the lead person? Position?
The lead person?
Yeah, lead position.
Well, it would be nice to have somebody to say, okay, this is what's gotta get done today. I mean, you don't expect three guys to just sit there and say, well, one's gonna run here, one's gonna run there. I mean, at some point in time, you have to have somebody just point a finger and and appoint somebody to do something too, you know. I I I think you should have somebody there as a lead. Number one, if there's an accident, you want somebody there that is a lead to to know what happened along with the person that got injured and, and, you know, so I I I don't, I don't see the lead position as being something that should be taken taken away. I mean, well, I I I'm, to me, I would give it a shot, just just to see how it operates. I, and I I have other reasons that I I really don't want to discuss, but I don't know. I I'd like to give it a shot, just to see, see what happens. And again, if we can, we can look at it again in six months, three months, whatever you want.
To me, if you've got the superintendent, the the water highway superintendent, okay, which would be Tony, and I'll use it by Tony, all right? If he were in charge of all the paperwork and stuff, then for what little, I'd rather pay him more and let him be in charge of the whole operation and just, you know, he can, he can put a, on the board right up at the highway department, these are the list of jobs to do, and and the guy's just go and do them. And I'd rather see him getting, you know, compensating for that. For a lead position, I mean, when we only got a few people to work, if if I were, the only way I'd be in favor of a lead position would be if the guy gets, let's say, an extra dollar an hour to be the lead person only on a specific project or a job. You know, eight thousand dollars increase in somebody's salary is a lot of money, okay? That that's, I I couldn't go along with that. You know, but I mean, looking at it from from the point of view, I mean, these guys have worked for the town for years and years. They know what's going on in town. You create a list on a board, and and I I tried to say that for years, and that's just, you know, making a list so nobody has to even look for the supervisor on what to do. You just go in, look, see what's next on the board, and go and do it. You know, and if there is a water lane, if there is a emergency, then, you know, Tony would be in charge of that. You know, Tony, Tony would be in charge of mechanical stuff, okay? I mean, he's got a background in mechanics. He knows what that is. So, you know, I mean, to me, it just makes sense to put one man there, you got him there doing all the paperwork, you know, and just just get it done. And and figure out what what it's gonna be and and eliminate the vehicle, but give him extra money to compensate for the vehicle, you know, expenses if his if his dollar figures, you know, if he needs more gas and stuff like that. Or we we look at getting him a vehicle, you know, just like, just like yours. I mean, I'm not in favor of you running that vehicle back and forth, but you know, it's burns up a lot of gas. But so I mean, those, you know, the three that I have a problem with is that one, the lead position, and then I'm not sure about the the tree warden. I'd have to give that some more thought.
Well, I I separate the two things here, the positions from the from the money. And given the size of the operation, it makes, it makes sense to me to have one superintendent for the water and highway, given the scope, size of the operation. That's not to say that Bill Young certainly didn't just jump right in there and work as hard as everybody else. Don't give, you know, he, some people objected to titles and didn't pay attention to what what they were really doing, but so we need a superintendent. Combining it seems to make sense. Again, set aside all the dollars. But I I agree completely with Jan about there needs to be a lead person, someone accountable, responsible, unseen, and who's not a superintendent, but is just the the lead worker, takes direction from the superintendent and just kind of oversees things. takes direction from the superintendent and just kind of oversees things when the superintendent's not around. The equipment laborer operator is just a backfill. We're not... That's not really in play. But I guess, again, setting aside all the money, why not put the tree function with the superintendent's position? Is there... What...
Well...
What's the rationale?
Well, there's certain things you have to do to be a tree warden. I mean, there's certain qualifications in that. And my capacity in the past previous employments were both under that. They both fell under me. And most Commonwealth communities now, that's where it falls.
Okay.
A tree warden is under the DPW director.
So I guess I could live with the organizational side, the positions, the combined water super... Highway superintendent and a lead within the highway department. It suggested set of a vehicle, maybe readdressing the... I don't know where these dollar figures came up.
To me, I'd like to see job descriptions. I'd really like to see what the lead person is going to do. What's his job description going to be? Is it to, you know, whatever? Okay, so to me, I would, before I... I would agree to this. I would want to see what they're going to do. What are they going to do for this much money? And, you know, what's their job going to entail on the new position here? You know, before you go and do it...
I'd like to go into executive session to discuss that because it's under a union contract, so...
This was...
I'd like to take this under advisement. And waiting till you come back with some... A job description or something like that? Can you get back to us for maybe Thursday's meeting or something like that?
Again, I think we should discuss it in an executive session because we've been meeting with the union on this four times now. So it's really a union contract.
Negotiating?
Negotiation.
All right, well...
Yeah, but I guess what I'm asking for is that there's part of that that does not go into the union negotiations, okay? The part... The job description is not part of the union negotiations. It's what is it going to entail? That we want to... That's got to be in an open session. That's what I'm saying. If you can get us that, you know, we could do it Thursday's meeting. We could just discuss it then.
Okay.
Okay? And then we can go into executive session on the monies and that kind of stuff.
Okay, but, all right. Time is of the essence on this one.
That's why I'm trying to push it.
Yeah. It's the 15th of July. The gentleman is...
I still think that the job description has to be shared with the union.
I think it's section four of the union contract, management rights. Management has the authority to assign... Create positions, assign duties, responsibilities. Now, I don't have any problem with sharing what...
It's the dollar figure that...
What we're planning to do.
That they'll have something to say about, maybe. I don't know.
I don't think so.
No? Okay.
But I agree with Jeff. The management rights are there.
I'm comfortable with what management rights section says in terms of assigning duties and responsibilities. How about just roughing out?
I have it roughed out.
PDs. And we'll come on to it Thursday night.
And we'll discuss this on Thursday. Okay, that'd be good.
And then what's the rationale regarding the salary changes?
Let's just... I guess one thing we can clear. Are we all in agreement of hiring a new equipment laborer?
Well...
Well, depends on...
It all hangs together.
It's all got to play in together.
That plan comes together, you're agreeing to it.
No, that's separate from everything else.
Because I mean, if we decide to...
That's the amount of money in that budget. That's all there is.
If we decide to go with what we have now, no, we're not going to get a new equipment laborer.
You get a new highway superintendent.
You will get a new highway superintendent.
If you... Okay, so the 43... If you agree to the organizational structure he's talking about, a combined highway water superintendent and a lead operator in highway, then you would, yes, go ahead and hire the new equipment laborer.
You can't... We can't hire new equipment... We can't hire a new equipment laborer right now.
Why not?
Because if we go back with the old, where are we going to get the money?
If we... You're saying if we go back under the old way?
Yeah, so I mean, we got to hold off.
I see exactly what you're saying.
Well, can we agree? Can we agree that we support the proposal of combining the highway and water superintendent's position as proposed? Just forget the dollars, but just creating one superintendent within DPW.
I would agree with that.
I would agree.
So is there a motion to do that? Jan makes a motion?
I move that we merge the water and highway superintendent into one position.
All right, and Jan seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
So, okay, given that, he can go ahead and hire...
Now I move that we hire a new equipment laborer operator at the sum of $43,096.
Whether that comes from internal sources and/or external sources, that depends on how we...
Well, that would come from external. Because there's no one in the department that would take that position.
So that's got to be put out for bid or... Have to advertise for it.
Yeah, okay. So you can go ahead and advertise for that.
Advertise for that position, that's correct.
So you've just, except for the dollar figure on the superintendent?
Yes. So now you have to take...
Okay, and the rest will...
Well, now you have to take the overall, what you have, and subtract that out of it. That's what you have left to do something with.
We understand, yeah.
Correct?
Okay, so I move we... We table this until Thursday's meeting.
Okay.
Remaining of it.
You're going to come back with PDs and some rationale on the figures.
Got it? Got it?
That's all I have.
Whoop, I'm sorry.
What's the project that wasn't... Did you get notice of this, Jeff? Jan?
Oh, that was for...
Technical assistance from PV...
Yeah, remember we put that... We put that in... When was it?
We didn't get the grant for it.
We didn't get the grant? Oh, no. That was for...
Putting this on... That's Chris Curtis came in.
I frankly forgot whether...
For technical assistance or something?
Yeah, it's every year they have a call for district local technical assistance, and we didn't get it. Got several things here. We need a vote. This is for town treasurer. Is there a motion to authorize treasurer to provide for the sale and issuance of a refunding note under general law, chapter 44, section 21A, to refund $85,490 principal of an interest on the town's landfill note dated July 20th, 2012, and due July 19th, 2013? All in... Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
This is to be signed by clerk of the board? Not me, I guess.
Who heads the court?
I don't know.
Do we have one?
I'll just sign. Here's a notice from the Conservation Commission conducting a public hearing July 11th. A request for determination of applicability under the Wetlands Protection Act and protection... Wetlands Protection Bylaw filed by Mr. Thayer. Existing single-family home to be removed. Site to be graded and ceded at 144 West Street, Hatfield. Complete applications available on file with the town clerk. Any... Do you have any comments on that? Otherwise, I'll simply acknowledge your seat. Here's another one from the Conservation Commission. Public hearing on Thursday, July 11th. Request for determination of applicability under the Massachusetts Wetland Protection Act and Hatfield Wetlands Protection Bylaw filed by Mr. Martin Holich, representing Martin Jr., Sharon and Linda Holich owners for purposes determining whether the boundaries of resource areas depicted on plans and/or maps referenced are accurately delineated and whether the area and work depicted on plans referenced and subject... Are subject to the jurisdiction of any municipal wetlands ordinance or bylaw. Do we have any comment on that?
I think that's over on Pantry Road that he's getting that.
We already did the ambulance abatement. Here somewhere. We already did...
Yeah, but that one doesn't have the right figure, Jeff, I don't think.
No, it doesn't.
Right. It's right. You can sign this one right here. I change it on there.
This is the abatement.
Yeah.
We were talking about... We had a couple sessions talking about audits. Need one for DPW lease. We need one for the bond issuance associated with the water transmission line. And remember, we had the discussion about kind of the strategy. We bring in Scanlon Associates to do the financials. And then meanwhile, town administrator would go out, do the due diligence, get an auditing firm. There needs to be a letter of engagement between the auditing firm and Scanlon so that whatever Scanlon does meets their requirements for the audit. This is a letter from Scanlon Associates asking that the board confirm its understanding of the services and price we are providing to town. Based on your request, the following procedures will be performed. Assist the town accountant with accounting records in preparation for the town's certification of free cash for fiscal year 13. Assist the town accountant with accounting records in preparation for the town's financial audit for fiscal year 2013. Consult on accounting matters priced not to exceed $6,500.
I don't know how much money we've got in that account. Paul's not here to ask. I just want to...
I think it was nine.
But then we're going to have to have...
No, but we're doing...
The other company we're going to be dealing with too.
Right, but this one is going to be under fiscal year 13 dollars because remember, we didn't have them in here.
Okay.
And then the other one, the audit firm, we're going to bring in under fiscal year 14 dollars.
Okay, so...
So there's enough funds to do the 13. This is engaging Scanlon using...
This year's budget, okay.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks. Got a little punchy. Well, it's a couple more. Anyone get a chance to look at those kind of column goals and objectives or focus areas for fiscal year 14?
The goals that we looked at? I mean, that we had in our package here? Yeah, I did.
Today's date?
Today's date.
It's 9/7/13, 2013. Clearly, right?
I think so. I can't read your...
I don't know what else to do either.
You should have been a doctor, I think, or a lawyer.
My brother's a lawyer.
Yeah.
Well, we're not talking about this one. No, I don't have that one, Jeff. I didn't... That was from your email, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, I read the thing and totally went over my head to print it out, Jeff.
Maybe we've done enough today. But I would...
Yeah, it's quarter or 12.
Take a look at it. Maybe next time we can... Put that one back on for next meeting. Board of Selectment's fiscal year 14. Focus areas. Okay? All right. Any other business?
We'll adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.